All right, welcome everyone. This is the District 202 Board of Education meeting for Monday, November 23rd, 2020. And just to make a general disclaimer at the beginning, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, community members will not be present this evening. Governor Pritzker extended the disaster declaration related to the COVID-19 pandemic for all Illinois counties and extended the ability of public bodies to hold virtual meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Based on the current public health concerns, I as Board President of Plainfield Community Consolidated School District 202, as head of the public body, has determined it is neither practical nor prudent to hold a full in-person meeting of the Board of Education on November 23rd, 2020. So therefore, this meeting is being held remotely. The Board of Education has been in closed session for the last hour. And Charlie, if you can call the roll.
Ms. Drake.
Here.
Ms. Doyle, Mr. Cook, Mr. Robey.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Westphal.
Present.
Mr. Kober.
Here, we have a quorum. Everyone will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
Republic, for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so we don't have any communications this evening, so we'll be down to 3.02. President's comments. A few things this evening. First of all, Thanksgiving. So on behalf of the Board of Education and the administration, I'd like to wish a happy Thanksgiving to all of our families and staff. I think we've probably run out of ways to describe how unique and challenging 2020 has been, yet we still have so much to be thankful for this year, even in the midst of a pandemic that has thrown us all for a loop. Would again, please ask everyone to celebrate carefully and appropriately in small groups if possible, and get some rest if your schedules allow. Another item that came to our attention this week deals with recalling of board members. We received some information from a group of parents about an effort to recall the board members who supported remote learning to begin the year for District 202. We certainly understand parents' frustrations and certainly respect their rights to advocate for their position. However, it is important to understand the facts when making such a gesture. There is no legal mechanism for recalling Board of Education members in the state of Illinois. We have done significant research on this topic to verify. Want to address a couple of concerns that was brought forward to us in the communication from this group of parents that were seeking, again, to recall Board of Education members. Lots of these allegations have cited that we don't have a plan and that parents haven't had a voice. And I would like to take the time to respectfully disagree with that. All 852 school districts in Illinois have duly elected Boards of Education made up of seven volunteer community members. Each Board has the right and the authority and the responsibility to operate its school district as it deems best for its community. We represent you. It is our responsibility to do what we believe is in the best interest of our district and community. That's what we were elected for. Everyone does have a voice in this process. We have since the very beginning, dating back to last spring, throughout the summer and throughout this school year, to date, have looked at every possible opportunity at every phase of our work. We've partnered with the administration and completely investigated this, continue to investigate this, and will do that going forward. You may not always agree with our decisions, and that's okay. That's democracy at work. In fact, we don't always agree with each other as board members either, but I can say with absolute certainty that everyone on our Board is acting with the best interest of our 25,000-plus students and our 3,200-plus staff in mind. District administration has done exactly what it announced we would do last summer. We started in remote. We monitored the condition for four to six weeks. If safe, we said we would start to bring back students in small groups, starting October 26th with our multi-need special education students. We did that. We achieved that step one. We said we would continue to bring back additional grade levels of students every couple of weeks based on conditions. Now that we have taken an adaptive pause like dozens of districts around us, big and small, because of the COVID-19 positivity rate spiking everywhere, but we fully intend to bring back all students as soon as possible and as safe to do so. Certainly appreciate your understanding and support and again, recognize everyone's overriding concerns in all of this, but we have those same concerns as Board of Education members, you know, that this is of paramount importance to us to do this, as well as to protect the safety of our community. And so again, to just reiterate that we have had a plan from the beginning. We continue to move through that plan, again, having to take a pause, as we have said, and that is just a pause, and we look to, again, be able to move forward with that plan, you know, in the coming weeks and months as the health and safety conditions allow. So 3.03 student ambassadors, we don't have anything from them this evening. So 4.01 board salutes. Do any of the board members have any board salutes to share? Nothing?
I do, Kevin. Sorry. I'd like to salute the Crystal Lance PTA donation that we'll read about shortly for the Red Ribbon Week items. Eichel Burger Elementary PTA, a donation of $2,750 to reimburse teachers for up to $50 for classroom needs to support remote learning. And the Lakewood Falls PTA purchase of IPEVOs for instructional use at a cost of $1,600. Thank you very much to those groups.
Thank you, Rod. Appreciate that and appreciate those excellent donations to support our students and staff. Any other board salutes? All right. We have no special recognitions tonight, so on to item five, public comment. So a couple of things, we're going to begin to do things a little differently this evening. We will be reading emails for public comment that we have received. Per board policy, we will be reading up to two minutes per email per individual and 20 minutes of total public comment. And again, that is consistent with board policy and consistent with what we would do in an in-person Board of Education meeting as well. They are going to be read in the order that they were received by Tom Hernandez. I have all of them in front of me. We have received for this meeting a total of 89 public comment. There were in broad category 43 that were in favor of remote learning. There were 43 that were wanting us to move to in-person learning. There were two that addressed thoughts and issues with transportation or questions about transportation, and one that was apparent individual safety concern. So that's the broad numbers, but now I will, again, begin to read these in the order that they were received, read the name of the individual that submitted, read the email, and then go on to the next one. And then, again, up to two minutes per email and 20 minutes total. All right, the first one is from Carrie Noor, and it's, "Good afternoon. Where to begin? I'll start with the fact that these district-provided laptops are crap. They constantly kick my daughter off of Zoom, or it just shuts down in the middle of doing something. I bought my daughter a laptop at the beginning of the school year because she wasn't provided one at first, because she is only in first grade, which makes no sense that all the students weren't provided laptops from the start because you knew you weren't bringing the students back to school months before school started. Anyway, when she was provided a laptop, I called Grand Prairie to say that she wouldn't need the school-provided laptop because she has her own, only to be told that, again, parents don't get a choice, we have to use the school-provided laptop. Next, report cards. The worst report my daughter has ever gotten. She doesn't meet expectations in all areas. You did hear that in all areas. This is utterly disgusting. You are failing my daughter. She needs to be in a classroom setting with the appropriate help that she needs, but instead she gets a reading specialist for 15 minutes on Zoom three times a week. What exactly is that going to do? We are a working family here, and we can't just sit and help her all day. I'm not a teacher. I work in the medical field, and I know all about the coronavirus, so don't tell me this remote learning is to protect the students and staff. The numbers are rising, blah, blah, blah. I don't get a choice to go to work or not when this all started. I had to go because I was deemed essential. Schools are deemed essential, hence why they are not included in the Governor of Illinois mitigations. Next, my daughter, and I'm sure many other students, mental health. My daughter is losing it on the daily, crying and getting frustrated because the teacher is going too fast. When she tells the teacher that she needs help, and help all the teacher ever say is just to follow along, come on, she's six years old, she needs help. The talking and explaining to her that this is what your school wants you to do is wearing thin on a six-year-old, and quite frankly, it is wearing thin on her father and me. All right, that's two minutes for that one. Next is Debbie Madak. "I wanted to let you know how impressed I am with remote learning. The teachers are doing a great job, as well as the support staff for our kids. Thank you for continuing to teach our kids and keeping them safe." All right. Next is from Megan Bradeson. "I just want to thank you and the entire Board for all your work during this difficult time. Making these decisions cannot be easy. I'm sure you'll get a lot of pushback and angry emails, so I just wanted to send one of appreciation. My second-grader's teacher has been absent for five weeks. My sister has COVID, and my husband's, as does my husband's niece. It feels like it is coming at every angle, and I am so thankful to live in a thoughtful school district so I can know I will have help keeping my children safe. Have a great night." Next is Julie Coy. "Good evening. I wanted to send a note of thanks and appreciation to the school board and Dr. Abrel. These are truly unprecedented times. As a special education teacher in the district and mom to a fifth grader in the district, I have firsthand understanding of both sides of the spectrum. Teachers want to be in school with their students. We are exhausted, stressed, and still overjoyed with what our students are overcoming. Teachers also want to feel safe and supported throughout a global pandemic. Thank you to the school board and Dr. Abrel for taking a stand for the safety of our staff. I have never felt more supported than I do now with the flexibility and creativity the district is using to help us have a choice. I applaud you. As a mom, wife, daughter, sister, these are scary and uncertain times. Knowing that I can keep my children and my family safe takes a lot of stress off my shoulders. I understand this is not ideal for kids. This is not ideal for anyone. My own child has had her struggles, but I am in awe of the strong independent student this experience is turning her into. Thank you to the school board and Dr. Abrel for making impossible decisions to keep students learning at home. I applaud you. I know all of you have had some really negative feedback, but please know that there is still a lot of support for you in the community. Thank you for reading the data and making educated, science-based decisions. I feel that the health and safety of our community is a top priority. That's important. So thank you. Thank you for all of the late nights, stressful meetings and phone calls, and for making the hard decisions. I hope all of you and your families are staying well, and you are enjoying the holidays." Next is Natalie Dunn. "Hello. I would like to thank you and the school board for making the difficult decisions about whether to continue remote learning or transition into in-person learning. I completely agree with and support you in your decision to continue remote learning as COVID numbers quickly rise in our area. It absolutely makes the most sense to keep students and teachers at home right now, rather than sending them back to the schools as numbers climb higher and higher. My children long to get back to in-person learning. I know they would benefit from seeing their teachers in the classroom. However, now is not the time for this to happen. You have made the right decision for our children and the staff, and I appreciate it." Next is from Karen Ackerman. "Dear board members, you are doing an amazing job in unprecedented times when there are no right answers. You have continually been forced to make unpopular decisions and will continue to do so. I am so impressed at the hard work you do and steps you have taken to keep our schools open and functioning in the face of a pandemic. Thank you for doing your best to keep up with the factual information and data in a whirlwind of misinformation. Thank you for working with building administrators and the staff unions to create solutions that are workable. Thank you for keeping lines of communication open and flowing both directions. Thank you for putting priority on technology and providing thousands of student laptops and technical support. Thank you for considering the multi-need students and giving them the opportunity to return to school. Thank you for returning all students to remote learning as illness has increased. Thank you for weathering the storm of public opinion and following science. Thank you for keeping the safety of staff and students at the forefront of decision-making. Thank you for the difficulties you are facing and dealing with daily to make the school system work in ways it was never designed for. Thank you for all you do, and most of all, for protecting our staff and students by continuing remote learning." Next is from Cynthia DeBelovich. "I apologize if I have butchered anyone's names. Mr. Hernandez, we hope you are doing well. We are taking the time to send a short email to thank you, to thank everyone involved regarding the decision to continue remote learning for District 202. Thank you for listening to scientific data as hospitalizations continue to rise. It is not safe to have staff and students in the buildings. We understand this decision is not easy, but please know that we appreciate everything the district is doing to keep our community safe. Please stay healthy." The next is from Kristin Young. "Good evening. Just wanted to take a second to say that I am in complete agreement with the BOE and Dr. Abrel's choice to go back to full remote learning. As a teacher in the district, I understand how difficult of a decision this is. I truly loved having my multi-need students back in the classroom and cannot wait to have them back again when it is safe for everyone. Again, thank you for taking everyone's health into consideration." Next is from Carrie Pate. "I am a new member of the District 202 community. My family recently moved to Plainfield from Bolingbrook this past summer. My husband and I have three daughters in the district, one in first, one in third-grade honors, and one in fifth-grade honors. My children are very good learners and thrive in the classroom, although I have one daughter who has been diagnosed with ADHD and requires a little more attention at times. I am writing to you in regards to the current situation involving the return to in-person learning and thought I might share my story with you. My family has been rather strictly quarantined since the epidemic came to the USA in March and have only recently begun to open our social bubble. Halloween is our favorite holiday, and in lieu of allowing my children to go trick-or-treating this year, I allowed them to go to a trunk-or-treat with a few close families in our social bubble. There happened to be a friend of mine present who I have not seen since the epidemic began, but it's only one extra person, so why worry, right? I got the call Monday after Halloween that she tested positive for COVID. Although we had been outside the entire time, my six-year-old tested positive for COVID four days later. This friend of mine happens to be a teacher in the District 202 and had just returned to the classroom the week prior where she had contracted it from another teacher. Thankfully, my daughter was asymptomatic, but we have now been in lockdown since Halloween, and I still have two weeks of quarantining to go, and my eldest is now having symptoms. A whole month of quarantine for my family, much less the countless nights of worries simply because one teacher had returned to the classroom. I understand that as a stay-at-home mom, I am fortunate to have the time and ability, albeit not the patience at the time, laugh out loud, to give my girls the help they need with schoolwork, and that not everyone has this luxury. I also understand that my kids are doing extremely well with remote learning and that not all kids fare so well. However, I stand firmly in my conviction that although the situation is not ideal, it is what must be done to mitigate the spread of an out-of-control pandemic." And we're up to two minutes there. The next is from Adrienne Callahan. "I would like to share my support of the BOE and Dr. Abrel's plan for a staged, safe return current remote learning. As a parent of three children, high schooler and two elementary students, I support the Board's current plan and their foresight in making decisions based on health dashboards and complying with statewide standards. I have to admit, it foresight in making decisions based on health, I'm sorry. I have to admit, it is challenging working remotely and ensuring my three children are effectively and actively engaged remotely, but I'd rather have those challenges versus having six children, or worse, my having my children bring home COVID to me, an immunocompromised individual. Thanks in advance for your consideration and sharing my support with the BOE." The next is from Mike Manade. "Good evening, gentlemen. I would like to share a video from the Director of the CDC who recently addressed kids being back in schools. There is a link to this video, which we have seen. Since it seems you're following local, state, and federal guidelines, I'd hope a return is in the near future for the well-being of our students, especially at the elementary level who need the in-person education. There is a reason Governor Pritzker's lockdown did not require schools to shut down. I think the district is making an emotional decision not based upon the well-being of the student body. The death rate for COVID remains well under 1/2% and even lower for students. As an essential worker, a public servant, and one who has not stopped working during the pandemic, I can personally attain to the strength of children and the resistance to the virus. These children are depressed, are becoming less social, and are becoming screen-dependent, something that parents are taught at a very young age to keep their children away from, mainly due to the lastly negative effects of screen time. In staffing, teachers' unions, and PPE availability are keeping the kids from going back. Shame on the school board and shame on the district. You have all had ample time to prepare for a return. When do the parents get to make a choice for their children's education? Please at least give us a choice whether to send our children to school or not. Do not take that away from us again. If parents don't want their kids in school, that should be their decision and vice versa, not the district's decision." Next is from Giovanni Giuseppe Paz. "I am writing to you to show my support as a District 202 student for the BOE and Dr. Abrel's decision with remote learning. I am a student. I at times struggle with my classwork. I am a child who needs in-person learning, but the reality is that it's not a safe time to have us students in the building. This is not only did I miss out on my fifth-grade farewell party, I entered in a new school. How nervous and scared I was, a new schedule. Here, I am a student who made high honors all while doing remote learning, so I support Dr. Abrel and the BOE decision with remote learning. I give credit to all the teacher in the district. I couldn't have asked for a better district to be in. And Mr. Hernandez, I thank you, sir, for all your hard work for the district." Next is, this actually just has DMMI78, there's no name attached to it. "Just wanted to say thank you for your protecting our students and staff and let you guys know you're doing a good job. I know remote learning isn't the ideal, but it is what we must do to stay safe. Thank you for putting safety first. Know that there are people behind you and support you." Next is from Tina Conrad. "Good evening. Remote learning is not working for everyone. I would like to know what action is being taken to open our schools safely. Is anyone investigating other schools that have opened hybrid with a choice of remote, as well as to see how they have been successful? When you say you will open when it is safe, what exactly does that mean? Nobody from the district has been clear with what exactly that means. According to the CDC, schools were never meant to be closed. In fact, they are one of the safer places for our kids to be. And if you would like, please review this article video below for reference. There's a video and article attached. Schools are not driving the COVID numbers up. If you had replied to one of my previous emails, that it would be a lot easier if someone told you how to be open during this time, but yet the government and the governor never said to close. In fact, the governor has said that schools are essential. Who would have ever thought there would be a time where our kids would be begging to go to school, but yet some teachers and parents in our own district is telling them no? Thank you." Next is from Mary Jacyan. "I just wanted to send a quick note, letting you know I support the decision that Dr. Abrel and the Board have made for remote learning. Thank you so much for keeping our kids and staff safe. There are a lot of us who have elderly parents who we have to occasionally take care of, and knowing that we are doing our best to stay safe keeps with some peace of mind. Thank you for keeping us safe." Next is from Melissa Woltman. "I'd like to express my support for the BOEs and Dr. Abrel's plan for continuing remote learning. So far, this school year has been going pretty well for our freshman son. He is engaged in learning every day. Most importantly, we know that at this time, home is the safest place for him to be learning. The teachers at North are doing an amazing job. Thank you for following the data and keeping our children safe." Next is from Faith Gould. "Hello. I am reaching out to you to include my correspondence with the Board Monday night. I wanted to, again, thank the administrators and Board for making the right decision with going remote. I know it is not ideal, but I do believe it is the right decision, especially at the high school level. As always, the staff at PNHS, where my child is a senior, has been beyond stellar. They have risen to the challenge and continue to amaze me. It feels good to know that this district truly cares about the welfare of their students and staff with gratitude." Next is from Natalie Dunn. "Hello. I would like to thank you and the school board for making the difficult decisions about whether to continue remote learning or transition into in-person learning. I completely agree with and support you in your decision to continue remote learning as COVID numbers quickly rise in our area. It absolutely makes the most sense to keep students and teachers at home right now, rather than sending them back to schools as numbers climb higher and higher. My children long to get back to in-person learning. I know they would benefit from seeing their teachers in the classroom. However, now is not the time for this to happen. You have made the right decision for our children and the staff, and I appreciate it. Thank you." Next is from Carrie Handtack. "Good evening. I just wanted to let you know that I am thankful to you and the rest of the school board for making the right choice to not send our kids back to school. The parents that feel different are more concerned about their own needs and not the safest, the safety of the rest of us. They don't realize how going back to school affects so many, putting a lot of people at risk. Thanks for putting everyone's health first and stopping the hybrid plan." Next is from Pam Jennings. "Hello, Dr. Abrel and Board of Education. I wanted to take a minute of your time to thank you for all you're doing to ensure your students, faculty, staff, and administrators are remaining safe while at school. I can't even imagine the hours that have been spent looking over data and trying to determine what will be the best interest of not only our school community, but the whole community. I appreciate the fact that you are using science-driven data to help guide your decisions. I see daily the efforts our custodial crew is to keep our buildings safe and clean for us. I see the results of your many hours of securing disinfectant and cleaning supplies. I know you've worked hard to ensure that all of our buildings have what they need to be ready for our safe return. I know that there are many people within our community that want us to return to in-person learning. I want that too, more than anything, but I want to return safely. I know that there are many parents that want the choice of when and how to return, and as a parent, I understand that point of view, but as an educator, I know that the choice will leave some people at work in the schools little choice as to their safety and the safety of their families at home. I understand parents want their child to have that sense of normalcy that school can bring. However, we know that once we return, schools will look anything but normal. The small-group collaboration will not be there, at least not the way we have known it in the past. The sitting around the room, using flexible seating, that will not be there. The small talk, walking to and from specials and lunch, that will not be there. The specials, not there either, not the way it was. So much of the typical school day will just not be possible. I want you to all know, I want to be back. I miss my students in person, but I have worked hard to build relationships with all my students remotely, and you only have to look out at our community to see that so many of our teachers and administrators are doing the same and more. We did not go into education to teach in front of a computer, but we did go into education to teach, and that is what we are doing. I know not all will agree with my position, and I respect that. I am not living their experience, so I have no judgment on what they feel is in the best interest of their family. I just know that, appreciate being safe, being kept as safe as possible during this time. Thank you for all you do for our schools and our community."
Mr. Kober, you have about one minute.
Thank you, Tom. Next is from, again, it's from SVERSCHO. "I just want to let you know that our household commends the work admin is doing to keep everyone safe. We are happy to continue with e-learning until you deem it safe to return to school, and the teachers have done a wonderful job." Next is from Andrea Schruppitt. It's, "Redfield says schools can stay open safely in pandemic. Please watch this as you keep saying, 'following the science.'" Well, here it is, and there is a link to an online video. Next is from Amber, it doesn't have a last name. "I want to take a moment to share with you my appreciation for all that has gone into make this school year what it has been. Our house is filled with supporters of the 202 learning community, as my husband and I are both employees of the district, and all three of our children attend 202 schools. We know that the care and consideration for our family, coworkers, students, friends, and communities, safety has been put first over filling our buildings with people during the pandemic. We appreciate the metrics being used to gauge whether or not we have everything in place for a safe and appropriate return to the classroom."
Mr. Kober, time.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And again, as we have said before, all of these emails have been shared with the entire full Board of Ed, so they will have the opportunity to read them and to look at any links and videos and attached articles as well. So thank you to everyone for taking the time to communicate with the Board of Ed. As always, we value the opportunity to hear from our community, and we will continue to look forward to that for future Board meetings as well.
Mr. Kober, if I could just add that, as we've done the last several meetings, in the interest of transparency, we will post all of the public comments, the emails that we received, with appropriate redactions on our website.
Thank you very much, Tom. Appreciate that. Very good point. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. The first item is our secretary, Mr. Dave Cook, was not able to be with us this evening due to a work commitment, so we do need to appoint a Secretary Pro Tem. So we knew, do need to appoint a secretary pro tem. So first of all, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add item six point zero three. Appoint Mr. Rod Westfall as secretary pro tem. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion.
Motion.
All right. Mike first and Bob second. Charlie, can you call the roll for the amending the agenda?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Thank you very much. Passes. All right. So we have then three items on the consent agenda. The first two and then we'll take the third one separately. So six point zero one is approval of the regular session minutes of October twenty-six, twenty twenty and twenty twenty and six point zero two is approval of the certified amended certified personnel agenda and the non-certified personnel agenda as presented. Make it a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, Heather, Charlie.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, items pass. Thank you. All right. So now six point zero three is approve Secretary Pro Tem Rod Westfall for tonight's meeting. I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Heather, Charlie?
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, item passes. Thank you. And thank you, Rod, for stepping up and filling in. Appreciate that. All right. So now moving on down to seven, item seven for Action Site and Finance Committee. And again, in Mr. Cook's absence, Mr. Westfall will be presenting that report.
Thanks, Kevin. We met last Thursday, actually, and first item on the report is the approval of the acceptance of the treasures report. Tony?
As of the end of October, we had eleven million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars of cash and one hundred and ninety-four million, nine hundred and three thousand, one hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents in investments, giving us an ending balance for the month of two hundred and six million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-two cents.
Any questions on that? Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the payment of bills in the amount of seven million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, forty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. Are there any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Next up to seven point zero four levy presentation for the year twenty twenty. Tony?
Hang on, we need to, we need to get an approval on seven point zero three. First Rod?
Well, I was gonna do all, all right.
Motion.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, can we, can we jump back up to the seven point zero two first, the treasures report?
Yes. My motion is to approval of the acceptance of the treasures report. Can I have a second?
Second.
Bob second. Okay, Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, seven point zero two passes. All right. So Rod, seven point zero three then?
Yes, seven point zero three. It's my motion for the approval of the payment of bills in the amount of seven million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, forty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. Have a second, please.
Second.
Rod's motion, Bob second?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook? Whoops. Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, item passes?
Next up is seven point zero four, our levy presentation for the year twenty twenty. Tony?
Okay, I'm going to share my screen with my PowerPoint here. Is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me just put it in presentation mode here. Okay, I, we are just going to talk through our tax levy for the two thousand twenty tax levy. A quick overview, we'll talk through the levy and extension process, how we calculated our property taxes and understanding one's own bill, a little bit of current historical property tax information. In the presentation too, we won't go through all the definitions, but they will be available if any of the community would like to look at the presentation and look up what some of the terminology means. And then we'll just have a brief discussion on property tax exemptions and qualifications. In the state of Illinois, local real estate property taxes are based on the equalized assessed value or the total value of all the homes in a local taxing community. After the exemptions are subtracted, property taxes are levied by local governing bodies, including but not limited to counties, municipalities, townships, colleges and school districts. The assessed values are not determined by us as the district, but by the county's assessor's office. And as with most school districts, property taxes for district two oh two are our largest source of revenue. We use them to pay for a large amount of our operating expenses and they make up about sixty percent of the total revenue that we get for the year. The tax levy is a request for local property tax dollars to operate. We levy both Kendall and Will counties. It really, the levy is where we ask for money. So when you hear the word levy, you can also think of it as an ask. Local governing bodies levy for specific dollar amounts, not tax rates. And then if government governmental entities or taxing bodies do not submit a tax levy, they will not receive any property tax revenue throughout the year. So the district would not be able to operate. The assessment process is done at the township level where the assessor will look at the market value as determined by real estate transfer declaration for similar properties. Commercial and industrial properties are value based upon market as well. Foreclosures and short sales are included in comparable sales for assessed valuations. Illinois statute states assessed value should represent one-third of the market value except for farmland, which is based on factors such as yield, soil productivity, commodity prices and mortgage rates. The property tax extension limitation law says that we can receive the lesser of five percent or the current CPI. CPI for the current year is two point three percent. I do not know a time that CPI has actually exceeded five percent since this law has come into play. Because we are going to be levying or asking for over that five percent, we fall under the truth and taxation requirements. And that says we must post a public notice and then have a public hearing before the final adoption of the tax levy, which will be done in December. The extension process is where the county clerk looks at how much money we have asked for, then calculates the appropriate amount of money for us to receive. They look at the property tax extension limitation law. They are then assess their tax rates for each district. And then they review for accuracy and then they extend the taxes based on the equalized assessed value or the EAV of all of the parcels that make up the community. The treasurer then prepares the tax bills, distributes the tax bills to the taxpayers. And then when money is received, distributes that money back to the local governing bodies. There's a review process. If somebody is not happy with their tax bill, the purpose of the review is to correct under or over assessed value. The assessors send changes to the property owners and publish values in the newspaper. The property owners then have thirty days to appeal and challenge the assessment with the Board of Review or also called PTAB at times. The Board of Review serves a copy of the petition to all the taxing districts and then all settlements of the Board of Review have been prior to the extension. The Property Tax Appeals Board is then the next level of the process. Typically, that's only done for commercial and industrial assessment appeals. And then the circuit court would be the final step if there's not, contention's not resolved at the PTAB board. Calculating the property taxes and understanding your tax bill. The tax rate is calculated by looking at the total extension, dividing it by the equalized assessed value, and that gives us our tax rate. So for example, if a school district levies ten million dollars in taxes with a EAV of two hundred million, the tax rate would be tax rate of five percent or five dollars per one hundred of VAV. There's a separate tax rate calculation for each fund in the school district. There's certain limits that we can have on different funds. And that determines how much can go into the different operating funds that we have because we use fund-based accounting here in the state of Illinois. The limiting rate formula takes into account what really the levy is made up of two parts. The equalized assessed value of the homes and then any new construction or new property that has been built. Because those are taxed at different rates, we can't just apply the CPI to the tax bill. You have to combine the equalized assessed value and the new property. And then you're, we're given a limiting rate, which tells us what is the total rate that we can levy at to receive the proper amount of money. So how is the tax rate calculated for the individual taxpayers? The total tax rate is expressed by the total EAV for that parcel of property after any exemptions are subtracted and then multiplied by the total tax rate and divided by a hundred. So for example, a home with no exemptions that has an EAV of one hundred thousand dollars with an aggregate tax rate of seven dollars per one hundred will have a property tax bill of seven thousand dollars. And then there's another example below for one that has the exemption applied as well. And you can just see how the different exemptions run over the tax bills here. Here's just a quick snapshot of what Will County property taxpayers' tax bill looks like. You can see that there's various taxing districts that come into play that make up a total tax rate. So unit school district two oh two would represent our line. And then it gets broken out. You can also see the different park districts, the police, the fire, things like that that are included. And then you can see your exemptions that are put there as well as your EAVs on the right-hand side. So just a quick look at our historical tax extension, the amount of money we've received year by year. It's just important to note that because we increase taxes at the rate of CPI, the number will increase each year. Years that have larger CPIs will see larger jumps, but because we see the CPI increase, you can see the year by year growth. Because we levy for dollar amounts and not for rates, the district asks for a certain amount of money and then the assessor and the county clerk look at it and determine what we can have. So when EAV or the value of homes goes up, the tax rates go down because we need to tax less of the home to get to that dollar amount. When the EAV goes down, that's when you'll see a rise in tax rates. Because we, you have to tax more of the home at that point to get to the same dollar amount. Just a quick look at our tax rate history here, you can see that since two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen year, we have we saw one year of growth and then tax rates continue to fall. And that's because the equalized assessed value here in Will County continues to increase. So we are levying for a total tax rate of five point four four as of the past levy here. Then a quick look at just the equalized assessed valuation history. And again, this just shows the growth of the community. Said the most recent EAV of just over three point six billion dollars for equalized assessed value. And if you look at the graph, you can kind of see that where the years that it has gone down, the tax rates have gone up and then as the EAV grows, the tax rates go down. A quick look at CPI, we're going to be levying for a two point three percent CPI coming up here. The three-year average is two point one percent and then both the five and 10-year average is one point eight percent. Assumptions for the twenty twenty tax levy, again, two point three percent CPI. We are anticipating EAV is going to finally come in somewhere around five point seven five to seven percent. The EAV for this coming year is just over three point eight, estimated at over three point eight billion. Estimated new construction is just over fifty-four million dollars, which would provide an estimated tax rate falling to five point two six percent in an estimated debt service extension to pay for the bonds of the district of just over twenty-nine million dollars here. Important to note, when you see the word estimated a lot throughout the process, we are using the estimates we are provided by the local assessors to do our levy here. And in the next few slides, you'll see terms like balloon levy. We will always ask for more than we know we are going to get because by asking for more than the two point three percent, what we're doing is we are putting a safety net in place, so to say, in case there are any errors made in the assessed, assessment estimations. So you know, if new construction was to come in at a different number, you can only receive what you ask for. So that could adjust that number and leave a little bit of money on the table. And unfortunately, the district then would never be able to go back and recoup those dollars. And it would take money out of the classrooms for the students. So how do we calculate the twenty twenty levy and the projected limiting rate? We took our prior year's extension without debt service, added the CPI to get our adjusted extension base. Then we took our projected net EAV and our projected net new property to get our adjusted valuation base. And then you can see as that calculates out, we project our extension limit will be just over one hundred and seventy-four million dollars for the upcoming year. Again, the balloon levy versus the extension, you can see historically we have ballooned and asked for that little bit of a safety net. And then we come in a couple percentage points lower each year. It just allows us to, to really safeguard ourselves against any errors in the assessments. You can see the tax rates historically of the, kind of the balloon versus the projected. So while we are ballooning up to five point three five percent, we project that the actual tax rate will be about five point two six percent. Here's just a quick snapshot again of the levy per fund. We do some projections in terms of what we think we will need to spend in each individual fund for the upcoming year. Then we take the, the new levy or the estimated levy that dollars that we are projecting, apply the growth in each fund and calculate it out to, from year to year. A quick look at what's next. We have our tonight, after this is the tentative levy resolution adoption. And that meets the twenty-day requirement before a twelve fourteen final levy adoption. Then that will follow, immediately following this presentation. Tomorrow, we will publish notice to Shaw Media to please publish the actual hearing information on December first. It cannot be published prior to fourteen days before the hearing. December fourteenth is our hearing and levy adoption. The levy must be filed by the last Tuesday in December. So on the fifteenth, we'll post the final levy to the website and then we will file the levy with Will and Kendall County. Again, here is a list, if anybody is interested in learning a little bit more of the terminology that was used tonight, because I know it's a highly exciting presentation. And then just a quick note about some of the exemptions and how do you qualify? What I will do is talk through a couple of the exemptions that are available. It does not mean everybody that is watching this presentation would qualify for any of these or would not qualify. It would be up to the individual homeowners to apply for these exemptions. But you have your homestead exemption or your owner occupied exemption. There's an improvement exemption, a disabled person's homestead exemption, and then a senior citizen exemption. And those will lower the tax burden by different dollar amounts. There's also a senior citizen assessment freeze that's based on household income limit, a disabled veterans exemption and a returning veterans homestead exemption, again, which look at the reduction of the EA value, EAV value of the homes. My information and contact information is here at the end of the presentation. If anybody was to have any questions on their property taxes or how we come up with the numbers that we come up with, please feel free to give me a call or email me and I would be happy to respond at my earliest availability to help kind of explain how this all works because it's not the simplest of calculations, but if I can help, I'm happy to. So at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Thanks, Tony. This is Kevin. Just one quick point of
Thanks, Tony. This is Kevin. Just one quick point of clarification. So when we have the public hearing on December 14th, should anyone be interested in making a public comment during that hearing? Can you just describe, you know, how they should go about notifying us for that?
Sure. The same way that they would send a public comment in, as you had read earlier. They can either email that directly to Mr. Hernandez and he can share that. Or again, my information is in that in that presentation. And if they would like to send it to me, I'd be happy to make sure that it gets over and read for our public hearing. And that'll be done virtually before the next board meeting.
Perfect. Thanks, Tony. And again, another one of those changes that, you know, operating in a virtual environment right now for the benefit of the of the public that's watching this meeting this evening. Normally, when we were in person, we would just have people show up and they would make public comment at the hearing prior to the start of the Board of Education meeting. But since we can't have individuals in person right now, you know, there is an alternative process in place for anyone that might want to make comment at the hearing. So thanks, Tony. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony, for that information. Next up is item 7.05, approval of the resolution regarding the estimated amounts necessary to be levied for the year 2020. Tony, anything to add on what you just spoke about?
No, this is just the kind of that the formal approval of the tentative levy. And then we'll get all that information published in the newspaper and on the website.
Thank you. That'll be my motion for approval.
Second.
Rod's motion, Bob second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the NLX Demand Response Contract. Tony, can you take a minute to explain that, please?
Sure. This is a program that allows the school district to recoup in some of the costs of the electricity that we consume as a commodity. And it returns in the form of reduced electricity during emergency times of need. It's basically allowing us to recover costs of the electric that we've consumed or purchased at a lower price. We see generally an annual savings. We projected about $128,000. So it's a great program. Mr. Paul Gonzalez, highly supportive of it and had just recommended that we continue to renew this contract. So we can continue to see the savings.
Thank you, Tony. So it'll be my motion for approval of the NLX Demand Response Contract.
Second.
Rod's motion, Bob second. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
Thank you. Next up is I'm seeking approval of the installations as submitted. Michael Burger Elementary Outdoor Bulletin Board. Plainfield High School Central Campus Baseball Field Improvements with concrete work. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Rod's motion, Bob second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up is 7.08. Approval of the acceptance of donations as submitted. Crystal Lons, $100 from the PTA for Red Ribbon Week items. Michael Burger Elementary PTA for $2,750 donation to reimburse teachers for up to $50 for classrooms' needs to support remote learning. And the Lakewood Falls PTA for the purchase of IPEVOSs for instructional use at a cost of $1,600. That will be my motion.
Second.
Rod's motion, Bob second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
Finally, item 7.09. Approval of the disposal of assets as submitted. Bonnie Macbeth Broken Cameras and Walker's Grove Various Broken Technology Items. That will be my motion.
Rod's motion, Bob second. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
We're good. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westfall. Moving on to item 8 for Action Curriculum and Technology Committee. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Kerberg. Last Wednesday, November 18th, we met 6:00 PM. Asking for approval of 8.02 High School Curriculum Guide. Added to the High School Curriculum Guide is Trades Math, CD Studio Architecture, CAD Studio Engineering, ELD Vocabulary Development for Summertime for Summer School, English, Math, and Science, $50 fee. And Wilco is offering two new classes for next year. Law Enforcement and Public Safety and Veterinarian Assistance 2. That's my motion.
Second.
Rod's motion, Heather second. Charlie?
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby? Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
Next item, 8.03 Summer School Guide. Looking for approval for summer school is at Central High School and East High School this summer. Costs is the same as past years, $190 for residents for classes. Every education behind the wheel is going to be $300. That's my motion.
Second.
Rod's motion, Heather second. Charlie?
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
In our last item, 8.04 Middle School Curriculum Guide, looking for approval. New course will be offered at the eighth grade level, Algebra I. That's my motion.
Second.
Bob's motion, Heather second. Charlie?
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes.
Thank you, Mr. Kerberg.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it. All right. So jumping on down to item 11 for Action Other, 11.01. Looking for approval of resolution authorizing commencement of vaping litigation. Lane, can you give more detail on that for the board and the community?
Absolutely. District 202 will be joining in a class action lawsuit, which attorneys for our school district, Francic, will be involved with representing us and other school districts within the state of Illinois and throughout several, several different states. This litigation will be in particular against Juul Laboratories and other parties involved with the production of e-cigarettes and vaping devices. We feel it's in our public interest or the public interest as well as that of our students and school culture and climate to pursue litigation against Juul Labs and other parties that been involved with, you know, the production of e-cigarettes and vaping devices, which target specifically middle and high school students and leads to a lot of abuse in the results of their marketing and commercial enterprises. So this will be asking for damages and and awards of monetary increments for staffing, for involvement of our school resource officers, involvement of time on disciplinary proceedings and educational materials that we've had to purchase to educate our students more and more and more on the dangers of e-cigarettes and vaping. So that's a quick summary of it.
Thanks, Lane. Appreciate that. Looking so looking for a motion then for approval of the resolution authorizing commencement of vaping litigation?
Motion.
Second.
Heather's second. Any discussion from the board or any questions for the administration on this before we vote? All right. Charlie, go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes. Thank you very much. All right. So moving on down to section 12, 12.02 Board of Education Report. Mr. Westfall?
Thanks, Kevin. Wilco, we met on Tuesday, November 17th. And we approved the minutes from the previous meeting of October 20th. We also approved expenditures for payment in November, the amount of $340,229.96. We also put up a IT Coordinator job posting. And we had a life safety visit from the Regional Department of Education of Will County. And it was one item. It was a outlet that needed to be repaired and that was done before they left the Wilco Career Center. So. And then I'd like to recognize the Wilco October 20 students of the quarter. First up is Luis Mora Moreno Auto Service Junior at Plainfield Central. Ethan Urbanoits, Certified Nursing Assistant, a Senior at Plainfield East. Marissa Machan, Certified Nursing Assistant, a Senior at Plainfield Central. Micaiah Blake, Computer Technology, Senior at Plainfield South. Arena Bergovzia, Criminal Justice, a Senior at Plainfield East. Lindsay McCoy, Culinary Arts, Senior at Plainfield East. Ava Figoria, Early Childhood Senior at Plainfield Central. Dominic Luciano, Fire Science Junior at Plainfield Central. Justin McCarthy, Game Design, Senior at Plainfield Central. Roger Nadium, Introduction into Health Professions, Senior at Plainfield South. Yai B. Rojas, Veterinary Assisting, Senior at Plainfield East. Anthony Finder, Welding One, Junior at Plainfield Central. And Tom, I will pass these on to you. That's my report, Kevin, for Wilco. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Appreciate that. We've gone down to item 12.03, the Return 2021 Plan Update. Dr. April and team?
Thank you, Mr. Kerberg. As has become a standing item on the Board of Education agenda. Here's our update on our District 202 Return 2021 Plan. Some things have changed, some things have not. Tomorrow, should be noted, would be our 60th or is our 60th day of school. Unfortunately, for probably about 99% of our students, it has been remote. But we do look forward to the day that we can start to get back more and more and more in person for more groups of students. As many of you are aware, on Friday, November 20th of 2020 at 12:01 AM, Governor Pritzker ordered us into Tier Three mitigations. As going into the next slide, we use the following five metrics. Whether we're in mitigations of any phase or what phase, these are the five metrics that we use to assist with our decisions and timelines and returning to in-person education. We use kind of a red light, yellow light, green light designation on each one of those. They have not changed colors since the last time that we presented at a board meeting here. What's changed is the red metrics have gotten even redder or worse as far as the COVID-19 risk metrics within our county and also our region. And then also our substitute pool has not increased dramatically in numbers and we're still in the red level there. PPE supplies readily available and consistent guidance from IDPH is BCDC. And our local county health departments has remained relatively stable. And then on a good note and positive note for our cleaning and disinfecting supplies, we do have a ready amount able to go. And we can, at least at this point in time, count on the supply chain staying intact. The next graph will show a pretty good picture of the rapid ascent of COVID cases in Illinois. And this is all off of the Illinois Department of Public Health website. And you can see where we have been making some key decisions on returning or a pause or announcements of returning. And that brings us to the 23rd and today. Moving to the next chart is a positivity rate from the 10th of November all the way to the 20th of November. And, you know, from time to time or on a regular basis, I get asked by folks, well, what's changed since you announced on September 28th timelines for certain groups of students returning? And really what's changed has been the positivity rate in this becoming a substantial community transmission issue. On September 28th, we were at approximately 8.4% on a positivity rate. And as of last Friday, we were at 17.8%. And even the day before that, at 20.2% of positivity rate in Will County. And certainly while there is some predictiveness of COVID-19 in the environment, it's really a lot of uncertainty. And if the numbers had stayed where they were on September 28th or September 26th of a positivity rate of below 8.4%, we would have been having more students back in person and adding to the tiers of groups of students coming back. The statistics have not played out that way. As I said, last Friday, Will County was at 17.8%. If you go to the next slide, which shows positivity rate, new cases of 100,000, new cases, and then the youth increase case. We have the positivity rates as of today. Then we also have the data as of the last Board of Education meeting, which was November 9th. And we've got from 13.1% positivity rate to 19.9. New cases per 100,000 have gone from 332, more than doubling to 743 cases per 100,000. New cases have substantially increased also, more than doubled from November 9th to today. And then youth cases having increased from 350 to 841. Again, that's since the last board meeting on November 9th to today or tonight. And then the last slide is a little bit of a summary. And you can see, you know, as of Friday, all 11 regions of Illinois were in Tier Three mitigations. When there is substantial community transmission, the Department of Public Health recommends that schools take very seriously and consider extending remote learning, canceling after-school athletics or extracurriculars, continuing the meal programs. We did have Tier One Special Need Students return in person on October 26th. Unfortunately, we could only get three weeks into that. Approximately 12 instructional days before we had to stop their ability to come in person again, based upon community transmission. And planning for next semester, and again, we had a plan for this semester. We're going to have a plan for second semester to try to get back to in-person. We will be contacting families shortly after Thanksgiving break with what we call an educational choice form that parents will need to let us know their intent for their son or daughter or child or student to return to in-person hybrid or to stay remote. Based upon all the metrics that we have, at this point in time, we will stay in remote learning for the remainder of first semester. It's not the answer that I like. It's not the answer that any of us like. It's not the answer that I want to give you or to give the public. But it's the answer and the direction that we need to take and will take for the remainder of this first semester. If anyone on the administrative team would like to add anything else, I'll certainly open it up to them or to the Board of Education for any questions.
Thanks, Lane. Appreciate that. Anyone else from the administration first before we open it up for questions?
If I could just add one thing about the educational choice form. While we're opening up to surveying families for their choice for third quarter, that does not mean that we would be starting in person at the beginning of third quarter. We want to be able to survey families now so that we can get their feedback in order to plan appropriately for third quarter, because many of our high school and middle school students may need a schedule change for second semester. We want to be prepared for that now, which is part of the reason that we are looking to survey or to get all families' opinion for their educational choice for third quarter now as opposed to waiting in phases like we did in the first section.
Thanks, Mina. Any questions or comments from the board for the administration? One question I had, Lane, it says in your last bullet about the education choice form that families will select that commitment for the entire semester, and then it says until March 19th, I think. It's kind of covered over by the transcript right now on my screen. So is it for the entire semester or is it just for the third quarter? I'm going to ask either Dr. Wood or Mrs. Griffith to speak to that.
It's just for third quarter, Kevin. We are not looking, it's, when I mentioned second semester, it's because of the high school and middle school, there are some semester-based courses, and so we would look if we need to make any adjustments to do that now, but the choice would specifically just be for third quarter because we don't know what will happen for the remainder of the school year.
Thanks for clarifying that. Any other questions from the Board of Ed? All right. Well, thank you all. Appreciate the update and again, continue to keep us updated as you have been weekly on where the the numbers are and where we, you know, think we're going, you know, with with the plan to return again, hopefully by second semester. We do not have any unfinished or new business, so moving on to item 15, Freedom of Information Status Report. Dr. April?
We have received five freedom of information requests since the last Board of Education meeting. One from Melissa Berg, a community member for materials regarding transportation contracts. That was received November 9, due November 16, completed November 11. Number two, Gina McLeod, consultant for McLeod Consulting for Materials Regarding Enrollment and I-Ready Test Scores. That was received November 9, due November 16, completed November 11. Number three, Ballot PDA Union Research for Materials Regarding Union Membership and Dues. Received November 12, due November 19, completed November 17. Number four, Keith Galloway, Vice President of Business Development for Student Transportation of America Regarding Transportation Contracts. Received November 13, due November 20, completed on November 13. Number five, Nick Wong, a community member for Materials Regarding Staff Employment. That was received November 18, due November 25, and completed November 19.
Thank you, Dr. April. 16.01, announcements and scheduled activities?
We have Thanksgiving break, November 25th through November 27th. Committee meetings anticipated will continue to be remote, December 9, 2020, 6:00 PM Personnel Policy and Administration, 6:00 PM Site and Finance, and 6:45 PM Curriculum and Technology. Next Board of Education meeting will be held, again, anticipated remotely on Monday, December 14, 2020, 6:30, first closed session, 7:30, public session.
Thank you, sir. We will not be having a second closed session, so looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, Heather. Charlie?
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Item passes. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time this evening, and have a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving.